All this meeting. Looks like we have the quorum.
Okay, before you got on, I said I might leave for about five minutes. We have a friend who's from out of the country and called and said he's stopping by this evening.
Hey.
So at least want to say hi.
That's why we record these kind of. Very good. Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting. This is the Board of Finance Special Budget Workshop Meeting Wednesday, February, I'm sorry, March 2. We'll go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. Liberty and justice. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, we have an agenda item for public speaking. Anybody would care to speak in preference to the meeting tonight? Looks like Liz, you're the only member of the public, so if you're interested in speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, so I really just I have kind of two questions, but one is more, I think, for the AES budget, but the meetings are happening at the same time, but maybe I could ask that question here and you could maybe let me know what you think about it. I was noticing on their AES budget that they give the year, you know, the budget for the year, the budget for last year, and then the percent increase or decrease. But I don't see any columns for actuals. Why don't we see actuals so we can see what they spent last year? And how, how under or over they were on a certain line item? You know, because we hear that they're gonna be asking for another 5.6% in the paper above last year and it would just help to see. You know, I understand the contractual stuff and everything, but how much? How much do they really need to spend for other items, I guess, is is up to question because we don't see the actuals.
I, I think, you know, again, this is really Q and A section, but I think your concern is noted. You know, I think it's probably more a question for the school, but part of the reason is they're not done with the year yet. And I think that would probably be part of their answer, but I think it's a fair, fair question to talk about.
Do we ever see that, though?
I don't remember.
Okay. So my other question.
We haven't really been happy with the way it's been laid out sometimes in the past, so.
Yep.
We hope to see.
It used to be there, the actuals for the previous fiscal year. And I do believe there is some guidance in the Charter of how the budget items have to be presented. So I think once the budget comes to us, we can look at it and see what it looks like and go from there.
And when, when is that slated to happen, you know?
If they approve it tonight, then I would assume it would be coming to us in the next few days.
Okay. Okay, and my next question is what is the status of the financial? That financial software package that is supposed to be helping with some insight as to how the money is being spent and where it's coming from, et cetera?
I guess the short answer is that it's in place and being used. It's, it's, I understand, a little more cumbersome than we would like or hope, but, you know, I don't know how much it's going to facilitate the information availability as much as it is providing some kind of commonality between the school district and the, and the town. But now we can, it's actually probably a question for finance department too, so.
So, so we are using admins, we have been, we went over to admins officially last July 1 with the new fiscal year. It is a work in progress. The Board of Selectmen made some suggestions for changes they wanted to see and how the budget and the chart of accounts was laid out at the last meeting, which will accommodate. You know, but it is up and functioning. It does have some limitations, but remember this was the lowest cost actual financial software package that was available that would cover the school. The yearly costs were, you know, a third to a quarter of what, say, the RAM school district uses. So, you know, we definitely have some compromises we're living with, with the software, but, you know, within reason, it's able to produce what we need.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Very welcome.
Okay. Any other public speak? You see an EB, I don't know if that's. Okay, well, I guess we'll, we'll go ahead and move on. Our agenda. So the agenda item number three is our main focus for tonight and for the next several meetings is the Budget Workshop of the Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Proposed Town Budget. Eric, you put together a budget summary which you're going to be presenting?
Correct. Okay. Okay, Amanda, can I share a screen? There we go. Okay, so hopefully you can all see this. I'm gonna make it a little bit larger. So, and I'm gonna hit just the highlights. You guys can do it however you want. You can hold your questions to the end, or you can interrupt me as I go. And I'll answer things on the fly, whatever you're, you're comfortable with. All right, so the bottom line is this budget represents an overall one-year budget increase of a little over 4% or roughly a half million dollars. Total budget as presented is $12,939,392 in total spending. So just kind of back up and say, what are the trends where we've been over the last four years? Over the last four budgets, which starting in 2019, 20 budget through this one we're presenting, the total budget has increased from 12.37 million to 12.94 million as presented. In the total town taxation, which is the portion that Andover taxpayers feel directly has gone from 9.16 million to 10.24 million in that same four-year period. So actual spending has increased 5%. Taxation has increased 12%. Okay, so where's the difference? That difference is largely due to the amount of money we're, we're adding to the budget from the unexpended fund balance to offset taxation. As of four years ago, we still had quite a bit of surplus and we burned that surplus down over four years to keep the taxation lower, not the overall budget lower, but the amount of actual taxation. So in that same timeframe, inflation has ranged from low 1.4% to a high of 7% over those four years. It's been a little over 13% total. So if you look, the actual budget increase has been half of what inflation has been. However, the taxation, the, what taxpayers actually feel has been essentially the same as inflation. So if you take the overall budget and you say, what are the biggest? You know, biggest parts of the budget? Number one, the town budget is proposed to increase about 10 and a half percent, which equates to about $363,000 and to a total of 3.77 million. The Andover Elementary School budget increases 5.65% or $220,000 to $4.12 million. That's presuming that the budget that is being presented tonight is the one that passes, the AES School Board. And the RAM budget decreases 1.4% or 71 million or correction, $71,800. And that total budget is $5.05 million. The reason the RAM budget is decreasing, it's not their operating budget that's decreasing. It's the fact that they are coming off of, we are a long way through paying off the bond for RAM. So they're, they're actually going up about $160,000, something like that in operating. But because we're taking, you know, a pretty significant bond payment away, the net is a 1.4% decrease. Any questions on that? Okay, so town spending, as usual, we break it down into a capital budget and an operational budget. The capital spending increases 22% or $195,000. You know, the cost drivers are, there's kind of two main cost drivers. The first is that the past four years, the recommended capital budget has ended up getting cut by both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance every year. So what we've actually asked for hasn't increased very much. It's just that it, it hasn't actually been funded up to this point. This year, there are two things that are increasing. The first is the Public Works Equipment Fund and the second is in the Roadwork Fund. So the Public Works Equipment Fund, that's due to the fact that the bids and the numbers we're getting back right now for purchasing capital equipment have gone up really dramatically. The, it's most obvious in comparing plow trucks. The last plow truck we got in 2019, we paid around $193,000. That plow truck today is 265 out the door, built identically to that first one. So, you know, we're seeing things when you can even get them considerably more expensive. You know, and that's, it's, and we're getting that both for spare parts and for acquisitions. What's really interesting to me is that when I'm getting quotes back from contractors, it's none of these good-for-30 days or 90 days. I've gotten ones where the contractor is willing to guarantee prices for five days. And that's across the board from fertilizer through, you know, through building supplies. The second thing is that we're recognizing that while we're we've stemmed the bleeding with roadwork, in other words, we're we're making a positive impact in the overall road network quality. You know, we're not making progress very fast and we've had to make a lot of compromises to do it. So, and we're also faced with an increase in price of asphalt. And that was before the giant spike in fuel. So I suspect that's gonna make the situation either even worse because one of our biggest single expenses is, is actually the cost of liquid asphalt. So, and that tracks to some extent with petroleum. So depending on what happens right now, you know, it may even be a lot worse than what we're forecasting. But, you know, it's also six months to a year and a half away, so it's kind of hard to tell where that's going. So those are, those are the, the big increases in capital spending. So in the operational side of things, we're projecting about $170,000 increase in total spending. However, it's actually kind of more than that, but it's moderated by two things. One, we are retiring the, the AES school bond. And the second thing is we are just about to make our last payment in this fiscal year for the Public Works loader. So those things together, you know, are about $120,000. So without those two items coming off the books this year, spending would be up almost $300,000 in the operational portion of the budget. So why? So the first thing is the, the major expenses. The major increase is in Public Works. The Board of Selectmen would very much like to hire another full-time Public Works member that would be hired on as a maintainer one. That cost is somewhere between 70 and 80,000 dollars, depending on whether the guy is single, married or married with children, based on the, the contributions to healthcare costs. And the second thing they would like to do is a full-time summer helper for Public Works to handle some of the grunt work and get that away from, you know, the higher-paid union positions. There's also fairly large increases for both vehicle and building maintenance costs just because we're having trouble keeping up with both of those right now. You know, again, because our costs are going up pretty dramatically for parts and supplies. So all total, the Public Works operating budget increases about $145,000. So that's a, that's a pretty huge increase. You know, we can talk about specifics later and justification if you guys would like. The other changes are mainly related to staffing levels. As you know, for the last two and a half years, the Board of Selectmen has been in the mode of trying to reduce headcount and transition employees from full-time to part-time. Unfortunately, they really started to feel the backlash for doing that from the public because frankly, we just haven't been able to provide the level of service that people in town actually want. So the Board of Selectmen this year asked me, you know, when I presented my budget, to also present, you know, what I would consider the biggest priorities are for staffing. I provided them with that and then they made decisions about what they would and wouldn't consider for staffing for this year. So last year, we had attempted to combine the position of the Assistant Town Clerk and the Building Department Admin. Frankly, that was a, a kind of a disaster. And we ended up changing course this fall and resplitting those positions, which has gone a long way towards, you know, calming things down in the town hall. So this, this also represents a series of changes that, some that we've made already and some that we would anticipate making in the next budget. The first thing is our Animal Control Officer quit. Actually, what he did is he came back to the town and he said he wanted his pay to be, oh, two or three times higher than it was. And, you know, so we looked around and in, in our case, given the, the cost increase, we would have had to retain the, the existing personnel. We elected to use NECOG, which is one of our neighboring Capital Regional Council of Governments. Their shared service for the Animal Control Officer in kennel. Good and bad to that. The good part of that is that they have professionally-run kennels and it's a fully-staffed 24/7 operation and it's seamless from the town's perspective. You know, the downside is the, the closest kennel is a fair ways away from Andover. So if a dog is, or an animal is, you know, captured and kennelized, people have to go a ways to get their pets back. So that's kind of a downer. The second thing we did is our mid, mid-year this year, our cleaning service quit. Basically because they got a little bit of a kerfuffle with the town clerk. And as a result, we went out to bid for both a cleaning service and then I also looked around and said, could we do a custodian instead? And we ended up switching from a company, a shared service, to actually hiring a part-time custodian. And the costs for the cleaning portion are roughly the same as they were. But what we've also gotten is somebody that can do an awful lot of the light maintenance tasks that we formerly were having to use Public Works or go out to vendors to do. So that has been, that has worked out really well. Both keeping the library and the town hall clean. So we would like to keep that going. I think that's, everybody's extremely happy with the individual we have. And we've been able to get a lot of the projects in the backlogs of things like painting at town hall, you know, just a lot of the little things, you know, we've had some drywall repair that needed, needed in the restrooms and things of that nature. So that's worked out pretty well. The second thing is we kind of recognize that we, the person that was working as the CEO, the zoning enforcement officer in the town, was working way more than 10 hours a week for the town. Now, he was kind of willing to do that because he was the town resident. But we also realized we have a big, we have a lot more need for that position than we had funding. So the Board of Selectmen asked to increase the hours for that position from 10 to 15 a week, which we've done so. And the, the item number four is we use a building official as a shared service from the town of Bolton. They actually cover four towns as the building official and then they do supplemental help to a couple other towns. So we, when we first took it on, because we only had, we had a fairly limited budget for that in our previous building official only worked about five hours a week. You know, we kind of looked at the size of Andover and the number of permits pulled compared to the other towns they covered. And Bolton initially came back and said, well, this is probably about seven hours of work a week. And, you know, I just said flat out, at this point, we have funding for five. So we tried it out at five and we've done that for about a year and a half. But the reality is we're taking up a lot more of their time than we're paying for them. So if we're gonna keep them on as a building official, we're gonna end up increasing that to five to seven. But that will also allow us to give some regular hours in the, in the building office from the building official. So it'll be a good, it'll be a good thing from on our end also. And number five, one of the biggest complaints I've gotten from employees the last year and a half has been just a lack of IT support in general. And, you know, I can tell you that the last time I got a new computer, I waited six weeks before I had enough time, you know, from David, our IT guy, to actually install it and switch computers. And so what's happening is employees are waiting a long time to get their problems addressed. And it's not that South Windsor is doing a bad job. It's simply that we've only contracted for eight hours a month of total IT time. So basically, we have one person in the building, four hours every two weeks. And so we're asking to increase that by about 50%. So you know, in terms of personnel changes, those are the major personnel changes. Like everybody, we're looking at really significantly higher costs for heating, fuel, diesel and electricity. Heating, fuel and diesel fuel. You know, we're very fortunate in that we're, we have an arrangement where we can lock in our costs considerably ahead of time. And we have locked in for next year already. We did that, you know, almost two months ago. And, you know, obviously compared to what costs are today, you know, we're locked in at way lower than, you know, than what's current, what our current cost would be if we were just on the market. But if you compare last year's lock-in to this year's lock-in, it's up almost 25%. So it's pretty significant. I think, yeah, right about 25%. So, and we know electricity costs, electrical costs have gone up pretty considerably. So we're just flat out dealing with inflation and facing higher costs in, in a lot of the commodities that we utilize. Okay, so on the revenue side, we did something we hadn't done in a couple of years, which was spend quite a bit of time going through all the revenue streams that we have and kind of updating the numbers. So the, the flip side of that is, and part of the reason we did that is we've noticed the last couple of years, we have underestimated how much revenue we, we're gonna take in. So we, the total revenue that we're expected to take in has gone up about $155,000. And that is due to a couple of things. One, we're taking in more to the building department because we've restructured the fees there. And the second thing is we took in a lot more money in the town clerk's office because there's been a lot more home selling and we do get a kickback basically every time a house gets sold, you know, in town. So those two things are hard to predict. They're kind of volatile. You know, so what we did is we basically looked at last year's revenues, you know, projected revenues from both those things or, you know, basically the last 12 months and then projected that forward. The next thing on the revenue side is the, you know, kind of additional funding we get that we don't normally account for in the budget. The first is the ARP funds. The town last year received just about a half a million dollars from the federal ARP fund and we're gonna get another half million this spring. The Board of Selectmen voted at their last meeting essentially to allocate 100% of that towards the cost of building a community center with the intention of building this community center without affecting taxation in this budget or the next budget. So other funding sources we have available. Lotsip. For those of you who don't know, that is one of the, the state standard funding mechanisms for the town. They add money to a fund every year for the town. And then when the town has larger projects they want to tap, they can, they can, you know, use that money to pay for it. Currently, the balance in the LoSiP fund is about $141,000. So it's fairly significant at this point. The last time we tapped it was two years ago. We tapped it for the work that was done to reconstruct some of the transfer station.
Isn't that supposed to be targeted mostly towards capital for like transportation stuff? I mean, isn't that by definition? A little more fluid than that, flexible?
No. So you know what? That's a misprint on my part. It's LoSiP, not Lotsip. Lotsip is a transportation fund. LoSiP is you know, is, is a more flexible fund. So that's my, I just put a D there when I shouldn't have. The last thing is that we still have a steep grant that we should be spending this year to help pay for road construction of part of Long Hill and then part of Shoddy Mill Road. So those are kind of the major funding sources. We did have another grant in with the DEEP to fund a trail design study along Route 316. Just got word last week that did not get funded. So that's kind of unfortunate. We did also this year get a, a transportation grant that will purchase for the town a new senior handicapped accessible 12-passenger bus. So that's good. That's, that was about a $75,000 grant that we got for that. And that's because of the additional funding from the federal government. That's 100% grant this, this time around, so the town doesn't have to match 20% like it has in the past. So that's been good. Okay. So let's talk about the mill rate a little bit and how this propagates down to the middle mill rate. So as we all know, the grand list is up significantly. So as we all know, the grand list is up significantly. Because this was a revaluation year. And as most of you are aware. When you look at the Case Schiller Index in Connecticut, the average home price has gone up somewhere around thirty percent. Overall, Andover is a little bit lower than that on average. But you know, obviously some properties, especially in the lake area have, have gone up in costs significantly. So the, the total grand list went from two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one million last year. To three hundred and ten million. So given that three hundred and ten million and the increase in the budgeted amount. The mill rate. For the budget that's presented here would be a thirty-three mill rate. Which is a decrease of eight percent from last year, because last year it was thirty-six. However, the other thing to remember is that the final budget last year that we approved. Because the Board of Selectmen had to approve it. To get the tax bills out on time before the public actually approved the budget. Was. Was higher than the actual one approved and was higher than taxation. So customers will get what on last year would have been a point one-three mil lower rate this year. So the, the actual mill rate this year with this budget would be thirty-two point eight-nine. Because the taxpayers would be getting the point one-one mil rebate essentially. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. So if we look at where the, the big changes come, a lot of it comes from. The capital fund allocation. And so what I did is I put. Basically, you know, the last, you know, three years worth of. What was proposed, what was funded. And then what we're proposing now. And then the last column is the current balance, although that's a month or two out of date at this point. So I'll just go through it. Basically, what we're doing is we're, we're recommending that we spend a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. On the Public Works Capital Equipment Fund. A hundred thousand dollars on the Fire Engine Fund. Sixty thousand dollars townwide for building maintenance. And a hundred and twenty thousand for the Bunker Hill Bridge replacement. This is actually may end up being too low. But it's looking at this point like. The design is taking long enough, the bridge actual replacement will get put off one more year. So we actually have two more budget years to pay for the Bunker Hill Bridge. For those of you who didn't go through, go to that presentation. That has been. The latest cost estimate puts that about three million dollars just for construction of that bridge. A hundred thousand dollars for the Bridge and Culvert Fund. Seventy-five thousand for tree work. Increase the roadwork fund to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Town Aid Road Revow and P O C D Implementation Fund stayed the same. Revow, you can see, we haven't quite finished. I think we have one more bill remaining for the revow, but we're probably gonna have seven or eight thousand dollars left over. So we have a start, you know, for funding for the next revow, which will be in five years. Um, and P O C D Implementation Fund, I don't know why I don't have the total there. But we're, we're the next Plan of Conservation and Development is due in two thousand and twenty-five. So we're gonna need to start spending that money, probably not in this budget year. But in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we will be spending some of that money. We do also have one thing that's due for the Plan of Conservation and Development this year, which is an Affordable Housing Plan. Which the state is now requiring us to have. We did have a separate standalone grant that we got that's paying for writing that. And that is due in June, so the, the zoning commission is, is hustling to get that complete. With the planner, Bill Warner. Okay, so one of the things we still plan on doing this year. Once we've got the permanent fund set up correctly. Is combining, basically putting the money we get each year from the Town Aid Road Fund from the state. Directly into the Towns Roadwork Fund. Instead of fun spending out of two funds, which basically have the same rules attached to them. We're just gonna combine the two funds and spend out of one. Okay? So that is kind of the big picture. Of where the budget is relative to last year. What questions do you have related to anything I've presented so far? And where do you want to go from here?
Hi, I just have a quick question. What's the difference between the low SIP funds and the steep grant? What, what's the difference as far as usage?
Okay, so. Steep Grant is Small Town Economic Assistance Grant. You apply for those, they're competitive grants. And you have to state upfront very specifically what you want to do with the grant. So we actually applied for that and got that about a year and a half ago. But we've got to get a, we had a, complete a bunch of other things before we could, because we. We applied for a grant specifically to try to reclaim a couple of roads that were in rough shape. Um, and didn't have sufficient pavement thickness to use less expensive money or measures to repair them. So in this case, what we had to do is we got, had to get the drainage finished on Shoddy Mill. And we had to get the connectivity grant sidewalks and other things completed. Before we could do that, which kind of pushed that back to this year. Low SIP is a state fund that the state. You, the money builds up regardless of what you do. So in other words, the state puts a certain amount of money into that fund every year for the town. And it's around twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. It's usually put in on March first. In fact, I just got the notice yesterday. I think that it was officially in, and that number you see represented. Uh, if you'd seen an earlier draft, you would have noticed that. I had approximately a hundred and forty-something thousand, and now I give you an exact number. So what has to happen to spend that money? Is first of all, it has to be something that is in the capital improvement plan for the town. And it has to be voted on. And then it's got to be voted on by the Board of Selectmen. And then you propose that. And it's got to meet a whole series of characteristics. It can be used for most things that the town would, would like to spend money on. It can't be used for maintenance, but it could be used for, let's say. Heating and ventilation upgrade of the town hall, for instance, or a major electrical upgrade. Or a paving project or sidewalk project. So once, what, but it has to be in the capital plan first. And then the Board of Selectmen has to. Vote to authorize spending the money for that. And then you apply and fill out the paperwork. And you spend the money and then low SIP reimburses you for expenses that you've had. Does that answer that question?
Yep, thank you.
Yep. In other words, the money for the steep grant has already been allocated to a specific project. The low SIP money, we haven't made any official determination on what or if we're gonna spend that money.
Diane?
Um, I would request for budget purposes, I think it's really important. We have a lot of grant funds that we do a lot of different things with. I would love to see a spreadsheet set out with the name of the grant, the amount of the award, what the eligibility criteria is for that grant. And what we spent out of that in this current fiscal year. And what we plan on spending out of that in the next fiscal year, because I know some will cross the budget year. But I think. It's important for people to understand where some of this money is being spent and on what. And it would help us keep track because, because. You know, I, I do know when I look at the revenue report that we have a connectivity grant that came in at two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, but I have no idea what that's for.
Okay.
With that money. If we could get all that information in one place. So we have a handy reference chart, so we know what's going on. And then, and then the current balances in those funds. And when we put a balance in there, can we have the date as of date, so we know what we're talking about? And that would help me understand where things are moving around too.
Okay, what's the lower limit on grant size you want to account for? I mean, we got a grant last year for a couple hundred dollars to buy trash bags. I'm not planning on putting that in the spreadsheet.
I think things we actually have to apply for that we have. A, a purpose for our project for, do you know what I mean? So I would say, to me, I would like to see anything. Five or ten thousand dollars and up. I don't know.
Okay. I mean, the reason I'm asking is, the town ends up with a lot of little grants. Like for instance, there's, you know, four or five grants. Every year that the town gets for the town clerk's office. For information storage, for lots of little things. I mean, do you want to account for all those? Or do you want to just, those tend to be one, two, three thousand dollar grants? Or do you want to just account for the, the big dollar stuff?
When I look at getting money for an expense. And we, and if we get this grant on a fairly regular basis. I want to make sure we're accounting for it in our taxation calculation. And that we're not. Raising taxes for expenses we're funding with a grant. You follow what I'm saying?
Would those be included as the revenue on the revenue side or no?
Well, that revenue report doesn't include everything that, that I'm sure we'll get. It's just hard to, that's why I kind of want to list an all-inclusive list, so we can at least get an inventory of what we have. And so we can kind of, when we get to the revenue side of the budget, we'll have something to look at and figure out, do we have everything we need in there? We may, we may not. I don't know until we get the information. You know, and if we get a lot of little ones, if a lot of little ones add up to fifty thousand dollars, well, that's still a big chunk of change. So. I guess I don't know how many little ones have. Please, I'm missing.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that'll take a bit of time to put together, but we can definitely put that together.
Any specific questions for Eric?
Yes.
Yep, Joya?
Just looking, I mean, obviously, just on a broad view. Cause I, I've gone to a couple other meetings, so heard a little bit more, but is this, this is. Probably the biggest spending increase that's been asked for in a long time, I would think. Because there's spending increases everywhere across the board, and I know we're gonna be dissecting it. So maybe. You know, in coupling that with the bonds coming off, like you said, so now Eric. Because, you know, Andover Elementary will no longer have that. You know, almost a hundred grand. And then I know Ram, Ram spending. You know, there's a slight decrease, but spending is up. I mean, I just think that all of us are really, it's gonna take a lot of work to really get into this after listening to some of the workshops and stuff, so. I guess I don't have any specific questions yet, because I think we'll handle it as a board, but. Is this the biggest spend in, and since I've been paying attention, I think this is the biggest, the town side. And not even, I don't even want to say the town, but it's a big, you know, the biggest that I've seen. Am I wrong? With it being five hundred thousand overall.
It's the largest increase I've seen. I don't know.
No, you're, you're not wrong, but remember. Last year, by the time it was all said and done. You know, you got the town down to less than a zero percent increase. So.
Oh, no, I mean, I could fight either side. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, and I've gone to every single meeting, so. You know, right, we start at a certain point. It's just, it's. It's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting to see, we're just gonna have to go thing by thing, you know, and I'm glad we have this big overview. Because, you know, Diane and I and a few of us have been present at some of the other meetings, so. Every single thing that's asked for, there's good reasons behind it. I don't doubt it. Is what I'm saying. Maybe I'm not communicating correctly. It's just gonna be tough, you know, deciding where and. When and, you know, everybody makes valid arguments for what they need and it's, you know, it's. Gonna be an interesting season, because when you take the mill rate as you summed up here. Right, it looks like it's coming down a few points, but the overall grand list is more, you know, take an individual. Bill, like even if you look at, you know, we definitely need to advance the town, I get that. But I don't, even looking at, and this is just throwing it out there, and I just did little calculations. I mean, mine would be over ten percent. I'm not saying it's not needed. You know, between ten and fifteen, I'm sure everyone across the town. So on top of a reval year. It's not the little increase to get to what we need. I don't know if I'm making sense, but probably because, um, yeah, so it's, it's just a big overall. Increase in spending dollars.
Sure, and, and one of the, one of the problems you always have is. Revals als- always create, in a sense, winners and losers, and, and that's. You know, that's tough, because, you know, the whole reason you do revow is to. Equalize individual assessments to what the market is for a particular property. So and whenever you do that, some things go up more than other things. But overall, I mean, what we control is we control an overall budget. You know, we, to some extent, we have a little control over revenue, but not a lot, because. The portions of revenue that are really discretionary on the town are only two things, really. The first is how much we charge to go to the transfer station. Which total is, you know, at forty dollars a, a pop nets the town around thirty-five thousand a year. And the second is what fees do we charge for the building and land use? We have zero control over any fees and any revenue stream that comes through the tax collectors, or not the tax collector. Well, yeah, the tax collector's office and the town clerk's office. Because those are all completely set by the state and, and you know, we have no, we can't make any decisions. So for practical purposes, our revenues are what they are, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna make much of a change. The only thing we really have control over is, you know, our fiscal spending, you know, how much we budget. You know, and, and that's, that's gonna be a hard thing over the next six or seven weeks. And you guys are gonna have a hard time figuring out. You know, a hard task figuring out what's acceptable and what's not to you. And you're right, this, this is something that's gonna be tough to get through the town. There's no question.
I understand where all the, the questions are coming from. Everybody's made good points with why they want things, why they want additional employees, you know, and, and all of that. So I guess, you know, we will dive into, I mean, I'm gonna step back and, and let my senior people here. You know, lead the way, but since they were asking questions, I just, I wanted to ask that. I knew. That it was the biggest one I've seen, you know, the biggest move to try to come. So let me ask one additional question, because it was talked about tonight with. With the staffing needs, and I know that this will be a big thing going forward. We might even have a night on it, is with the whole public works and adding staff.
Sure.
I just, the plan, so I know that you're gonna have, they want. Almost a six-month person, so that's another guy that's gonna come on as a, the summer help at a, at a decent wage. I mean, I've listened to the back and forth. So hopefully that's gonna alleviate. Is, is there a plan if a whole nother guy besides? So hopefully that's gonna alleviate, is, is there a plan if a whole nother guy besides the summer help comes on? That they're gonna be out there every day, there's really that need for that worker, I'm not saying there is or not. I just want to be convinced on that end, I mean, there's a plan, I know you have Jay at the top as a supervisor.
Right.
Four guys, I believe, besides him. And, and a summer helper.
Right, so, let's step back and say, I mean, if you go back in time. Um, the town crew was five personnel. Um, plus a supervisor, plus typically two summer helpers. And over the years, we methodically chopped that down to the point where we had five. Uh, or correction, three employees total, including the supervisor. Because, uh, Ed Kasich was essentially made. Uh, the supervisor in Public Works when they fired the previous. Uh, Public Works Director, um, and chose not to replace them. And then a couple of years later, they cut one more position from Public Works. And frankly, they've cut, cut it back so far. That there is an enormous backlog of work. I mean, realistically, we have ten year, we have a ten year backlog of drainage projects to do right now. Um, roadside drainage.
Sorry, Eric, can you do all that like in the winter months? I get it in the, you know, like today. Like, uh, today was warmer, but like, what would today's work look like?
So.
You know, I get it, I understand buildings and grounds and all that, but.
Right, so the last, you know, week or two, the Public Crew Works Crew has been building a new bus turnaround. On Basola Road, um, basically what happened is. Uh, a new, the, the bus had always used the last driveway on the road. And they got new owners, that owner. Put four or five cars there, and there was no longer a way for the bus or the plows to turn around. So we got an agreement in place with both landowners there. Um, you know, they gave us permission to develop a turnaround. Um, and Public Works, basically, we cleared the trees, got rid of all the stumps, ripped out all the topsoil. You know, and, you know, built up and compacted the basin, subbase, and now we have a gravel turnaround for the town. Um, you know, so there's some things we can do, there's actually quite a bit of stuff we can do in the off season. Um, a lot of what we do in the off season, for instance, is maintenance. Like this year, the two, or this week, the Public Works has been replacing the main bushings on the backhoe. The backhoe that we have is. Like fifteen, sixteen years old, and basically the, the main control arm has gotten really sloppy. Just because the bushings wear out, so we've been doing a bushing replacement and, and that takes quite a few guys, because it's a heavy thing. Um, you know, and, you know, it's a fair bit of time to do. So they're, they're definitely busy in the winter. We normally don't do drainage projects when the ground is frozen. Um, because then you're likely not to get it compacted correctly after you've done it. Um, the, the plan is basically to start back up on shoddy Mill Road as soon as the ground is thawed. Um, that's somewhat problematic in the spring, because it's the wet time of year, so it's harder to work then. Um, and you have more issues with inland wetlands and water course approvals for projects. Um, there are some things we can specifically do only in the driest part of the year. Um, but you can look at it and say in the summer, we typically have a three month block. You know, where we do the majority of our drainage work and drainage projects. Um, but if you look at, on a yearly basis, all the tasks that Public Works needs to complete. I mean, we've got around, somewhere around five hundred and fifty catch basins, each one of those has to be cleaned out. Um, every year. Um, we have a whole series of waterways, which is where the catch basins. You know, and the water and the piping lead to that have to be addressed, not every year. But you have to do a certain fraction of them every year, um, the roads all have to be swept. Um, we have to push back any, you know, organic matter that's accumulated on the sides of the roads. Uh, so there's, there's an enormous amount of background, um, stuff that Public Works needs to get done. I mean, if you take one thing, if you take roadside mowing. Um, the town of Andover basically has one guy working full time. From the first week of May to sometime in October, just roadside mowing. Um, and that gets us basically two full mows. Of all the roads in the town, plus the rail trail and the ability to push back a little bit on the last pass. Um, it, it seems crazy that it takes that long, but roadside mowing is one of the things that the town is just constantly doing. All summer long, and we don't keep up. I mean, you know, we're, we still have problems with sightlines on intersections, even with one guy mowing full time, so.
Yeah, I really appreciate, I just wanted to understand a little more, I don't doubt there's reasons. You know, and, and needs, and that just explains a little more. I definitely always could think of the summer and that and the tree, you know, I just didn't know. Clearly, ma- vehicle maintenance and everything, but I know, I don't think you have, I know you have guys that are mechanically inclined, like you said, I've heard that in meetings. So I know you have to keep up all that equipment, you have to, you know, get your parts, do whatever, I, so I just needed a little bit of backup on. It seemed like a lot, but if you've had that number in the past, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and we do not have a full time mechanic anymore. Um, we haven't in about ten years, um, but Zach, uh, who's a maintainer too. Is functioning as our mechanic, or as their lead mechanic anyway, and he is a trained, uh, diesel. And frame mechanic, so we are lucky to have somebody that can do both the roadwork side of things. And, you know, yeah, is a good diesel mechanic. Um, you know, we do have limitations, because we're so small, we can't afford to buy the diagnostic equipment. Um, because the, the, like for Peterbilt trucks, you know, it's like five or six grand a year. To pay the subscription fees to be able to use, even if we buy their, their diagnostic equipment, their electronic testers. You know, they still charge you something like six grand a year, just for the privilege of, um, so. You know, there's a lot of things we can't do, but we try to do as much as we can in-house. And we're fortunate that we have between the whole crew, we have Tommy, who's a really good welder. Zach, who's a really good mechanic, and Rich is really good at repairing all the small engine stuff. So like weed whackers and lawn mowers and all that stuff, he can, you know, he can completely repair. So we do do a lot more stuff in-house, um, rather than pay to, to ship it out. But, but, you know, the more you do in-house, the more man hours, you, you know, you chew up doing it, so.
Thank you for that, can, since we're on, can I ask one more question? Are you guys, since we're on the, at Public Works situation, I mean, I know we're gonna have different. I, I know you guys were talking about that piece of equipment, the skid, whatever, steerer, is that what it is?
Yeah.
One of our meetings, just someone brought it up to me when I was asking about it, because. I work with people that do this stuff too, is there a reason why, or, because from what I understand, the one that you want to get. Doesn't have tires or wheels, right?
It is a wheeled unit, it's not a tracked unit.
Oh, it is the wheeled unit, it's not the.
Correct, correct.
But you can drive it a little from job to job if you want to, I know you talked about transporting it and, right? For smaller.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want to get crazy, you're not gonna drive the thing all over town, but, you know, you can drive it short distances, certainly.
Right, and, and the main use for that again was, what, I know that it can pick up things, it has attachments, it's got a bucket loader. And all of that, just so I don't have another meeting, but.
Yes. So it's, it's, it's a pretty multifunctional machine. Um, and what's important is it's just, it's much faster to operate than either a backhoe or a loader. So it's, and it's smaller in scale, so it gets in a lot of places that the loader and the, the loader's too big to get into. Um, so. Sorry, and we have the ability to, uh, you know, we're also intending to use that for snow removal. Um, you know, because it's got some real advantages, just being small and.
Something.
Yeah, specifically for sidewalks, that's part of the reason why we got a narrower one. Because we're anticipating we're gonna end up doing some clearing of sidewalks, potentially with that. Um, we also have an awful lot of wood posts in town. You know, that the town is gonna be stuck maintaining both for the ball field, um, and potentially for the rail trail. And one of the things we've needed for a long, long time is a post hole digger. Um, and so the easiest way to do it is to, to kind of do that as a skid steerer attachment. So it's a fairly multifunctional, you know, little unit. Um, the, the unfortunate thing is, I don't think we're actually gonna be able to get it this year. Um, I think we may order it this year, but, um, you know, in talking to them, there's. Because we're not gonna have potentially the funds until July. Um, if we wait till July to order it, we're not gonna get it for about a year. Um, because there's, there's just, there's so few build stop spots left. Um, you know, if we ordered it right now, today, we could get it built this year. Um, but if we wait, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get it. Um, and that's, you know, I know I was talking to, to, uh, Ron Bissin, uh, today. And, and he's got a piece, he's got, also got a Bobcat, uh, you know, on order. And he said they've told him he's not, I mean, he's already put the deposit on it, and he knows he's not getting it for. You know, a year or eighteen months, so that's one of the problems facing Public Works right now. Is just the ability to actually get equipment is, is getting really tough.
Thank you.
Yep.
Others, Diane?
I have another request for information, I just want to get this out there in case it takes a while to put it together, since we have a, a lot of, um. Money tied up in salary expense, I have seen in the past that we had a salary worksheet, I would love to see a spreadsheet. Of the position, the current hourly salary for this fiscal year, what the proposed hourly salary is for. The cur- the upcoming, the budget year that we're doing, so we can look at some historical trends here. And, and include the new positions in that as well, so we can kind of. I'd like to see that on a spreadsheet, so I can kind of, and I've seen you do a spreadsheet of all the positions and the hourly wage and whether yearly. And everything, and for me, it would be very helpful on the positions to know whether that position is union or not.
I have already started that scaled down spreadsheet. So I, I do have it, Eric, I am working on.
Yeah, I was gonna say Sheri can probably supply that to you.
Yeah.
Um, we just, the, the latest copy I have doesn't have all the decisions that the Board of Selectmen made.
Correct.
So it would need, it needs a little work to go to you, but it's basically done, and that's how, that's what we present to the Board of Selectmen. We can certainly give that to the Board of Finance.
Yes.
If you can identify on that spreadsheet for me, on the union positions, what the. Required contact contractual increase is, so I know that it's required versus optional.
Okay.
And I just want to follow up that too.
Joanne, let me, Louise has had her hand come out, give her a chance, Louise, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking for her real hand like this, let's see.
It's a virtual hand.
Sorry.
I just wanted to know if, um, Andover has received all any type of eligible COVID related economic relief. All the monies that we're entitled to, and if there's anything out there that we may end up getting later on. That might impact the budget.
So the one thing that might impact the budget, and it's an unknown at this point, because the state has not released. The, uh, the rules for it yet, is, and it's not COVID related, it's infrastructure related. So there's a, there's a pretty large pool of money for dealing with bridges in culverts. That's trickled down from the federal government to the state, um, what we don't know is what the rules are. Um, I am working right now to get a couple of projects into the design stage. Um, you know, to kind of maximize our ability to take advantage of that funding. Um, in a perfect world, it will be retroactively applicable to bridges that are. In the federal local bridge program, but are not yet actually in construction. Um, that has the potential to save us quite a bit of money. Um, you know, for bridge funding. Um, same thing with culvert funding, but it's just the rules aren't out there yet, so I, you know, I have no idea what. What the rules are going to be, so it's, it's, so I'm trying to position ourselves to take advantage of it. But, you know, until such time as they actually say how it's gonna be spent, I don't know how that's gonna come out.
Okay, that's some good news.
Thank you, uh, Joanne, did you want to ask something else?
Just quick follow up on the salary question, I noticed on some of the spreadsheets, did everyone, everyone. There was no un, um, settled contracts last year, so everyone got their raise, correct? Like, I believe, whatever was voted for the non-unionized people, they got a raise, I know, I remember. And then I think all of the unions still got a raise, correct, or, you know, for whatever they were going to get.
Correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I saw on the spreadsheet, Sheri maybe could say. Some of them say it just wasn't figured in the spreadsheet, so I saw some places that showed six percent. For people that I know didn't get six percent or something.
Okay, so I can, I can explain that. Last year, because we were going into budget negotiations. You know, I had recommended to the board that they consider a three percent kind of across the board pay increase. Um, and they made the decision for, specifically for the union members that were in MEIU. To not budget for any, uh, salary increase, because there was no contract in place. Um, for whatever reason, now that wasn't what I wanted to do, but that's what the board voted to do, and that made it all the way through the budget process. But, you know, because the, the board agreed with, on a framework for a contract with the union. Um, and agreed to a three percent raise for those union employees, and the union agreed with it. Um, it went into effect July one, even though there's no official contract yet with that union. Um, because the town didn't want to have to pay it back retroactively, um, and we had already. Indicated as our bargaining position, what we were looking for in terms of, uh, raises. You know, yearly raises for that union, so based on that. You know, the fact of the matter is, in the current budget. Um, we budgeted for a certain amount, but the board knew full well that they were gonna end up paying. More than that amount, but they didn't want a budget for it, so that's kind of where we're at, so there was a.
They receive the money already, though.
Right, so they did get a salary increase, um, and then presumably next year, they will get a salary increase. Although that's still, you know, obviously somewhat, you know, indeterminate. Um, so a total of six percent over what was budgeted, but it's, it's six percent over. That's two years worth of increase, not one year.
Let me ask a question a different way to make sure I kind of get this. So currently, in our current fiscal year, what we have as a adopted budget item. Is less than what we're currently paying everybody. Thinking, but we are gonna be over expended on those positions.
Yes, and two or three months ago, and one of the things I sent you, I was explicit with that, that that was going to be.
Well, that's why I want a spreadsheet that has all this stuff in it, so we have it all in one place, you know.
Yeah, we'll give you the, the personnel cost spreadsheets.
Yeah, thank you so much, Sheri, for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Yeah, but we put that together every year for the board anyway, the Board of.
Contract still isn't settled quite yet?
Well. Well. It is and it's not. You know, we formally agreed on the terms of the contract. So we have the thing hammered out. Um, what we don't have is the final language yet. Which the union was supposed to have back last month, but they have not actually physically produced it. But we've, we've come to an agreement on all the, uh. On all the, basically the appointments. The union has the changes they wanted. We have the changes we wanted. Within reason, um, we both agreed, you know, where we're at.
Okay, anybody have any other specific questions for Eric? I've got a couple, Eric, um, and these actually tie back to the actual budget and spreadsheet. There seems to be kind of a discrepancy in the rate increases you. Or that are set for like, uh, electricity, for example, it's like eighty-three percent for the. The old town hall and it seems like we're almost under budgeted for a couple of things. I, I don't know if there was kind of a, if we're just trying to reflect reality.
Yeah, in cases, like the old town hall, for instance. So we were kind of anticipating, well. Yeah, so, so the, the increase we're projecting for that. Basically lines us up with what our actual spending is, um, on a yearly basis. You know, I, I think we've been anticipating, we keep anticipating that we're going to get rid of that building. You know, entirely. And it seems a shame to be paying for electricity when all we do is provide minimal heat to the basement. You know, and have functioning overhead doors. But the reality is the drivers can't get the vehicles in and out with overhead, without overhead doors. You know, so you have to keep electricity in the building. You know, and you have to keep minimal heat in there because it at least knocks the mold down a little bit in the building. What we really need to do is just get rid of that freaking building, um, and get the vehicles elsewhere, but that.
Are you talking about the old firehouse, the old town hall?
I'm talking about the old firehouse.
Okay, alright, yeah, that's okay. Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's budgeted currently at nine hundred dollars. You've already spent twelve hundred dollars this year. So it, it looked kind of odd. We were clearly under budgeted last year. And so I get that part of it. You know, for spending twelve hundred a year, you've only got nine hundred for next year. And maybe that's, you know.
That's for which one? That's for?
Uh, this is the electricity for the old firehouse. It's line three eighty-three, just something to look at. I mean, at this point, it's been passed, right? So. It's just some of the numbers.
My question is, when we're budgeting for like utilities, are we looking at our current usage rate and applying the new? Charges to that?
Like it. So for example, if you look at, you know, you look at, for example, electricity for the total town garage. You know, we were budgeted, you know, this year at three thousand dollars, but the actual is like forty-two, forty-six. So clearly we were. You know, we were under budgeted for, for that, I think probably. And so, and, and there's a big increase. There's an eighty-three percent increase in the budget. But it seems to line up pretty well with the actual expenditures this year for, so for some of these lines, it seems to make sense, but in others, it just didn't seem to line up. So it, it just. It wasn't across the board twenty-five percent increase. That's what maybe started looking at it. And that's why I was asking the question. I. It's, nothing is agreed. Just, I just was curious about some of the processes. And the one for the old, uh, town hall or the old fire station didn't quite. Seem like it was adequate, frankly.
So, yeah, okay, we can, we can certainly revisit that. Um, yeah, but as much as possible, what we're trying to do is line them up. You know, based on the utility increases we've seen this year and then projecting that. But, I mean, I'll be honest, there's so much uncertainty in that. You know, I could easily see us off twenty-five percent or thirty percent, you know, even when we're trying to guess well, frankly.
But we could really go back and look at our usage, our meter readings for that period of time. And apply the new rate to it. I just want to make sure we're not trying to annualize figures. That are based on the highest use months, like the winter months. Because it all, you know, because you don't have the same electrical use in the summer as you do in the winter. I just want to make sure. Usage and then applying the new rates to it.
Yeah, no, we're, we're generally trying to look at one year's data for that. You know, and the same thing when we're trying to calculate what we actually use for fuel. You know, we go back in and usually what I do is I pull, you know, for, for heating oil, I look every year and say, okay. How many heating degree days was there last year? How does that compare to an average year? What was our fuel usage last year? Are there any contributing changes? That are likely to increase and decrease and then forecast. But, you know, I mean, it's, it's always a guess. You know, frankly, and there's a fair bit of uncertainty in it, no matter how carefully you do.
Another question, we have a lot of accounts we're not using currently, you know, things like fuel additives and stuff. Are those going to continue to appear in the budget? Can we get those cleaned up?
So, the reason they're in this year is because we're changing chart of accounts. Next year's chart of accounts is truncated quite a bit. But because we're comparing year over year, your last year to this year. Those kind of have to be in there because in some of those cases, they were in last year's budget, but not this year's budget. So that, that's really why we, I think we can, we can get rid of an enormous amount of unused line items. Next year. I don't think we can this year.
Okay. It just makes it cleaner and some of them didn't seem to have values, neither one.
Yeah, there's some, that I agree with you, Mark. There are some that don't have values in last year or this year. So those could go.
But I think everyone's in agreement.
Across the way, we should reduce the rows in the spreadsheet and.
Yeah, it makes it easier for everybody. And I'm sure Sherri and, and. And Eric, three hundred percent. Last specific question I have, um, at, at least at this point is, um. The brush pile removal under the total transfers, under the transfer station, uh, expenses. This is row five eighty-five, if you happen to be looking at the spreadsheet. So I'm a little confused by the note there because the note says, consider this making an accruing fund. We only grind every other year and it's about fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
But we've spent fourteen thousand dollars this year. So do we need to budget for this next year?
Well, that's why.
Seven thousand dollars.
So. We didn't grind this year. We, I don't think.
Come to expenses there then.
We had an overage for. Let it, that brush pile in last fiscal year.
Oh, 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 okay. Alright, I see. Yes. So this, this year to date, we have not expended, right?
Correct. That, the brush pile is one of those stupid things. I mean, that's one I would think that honestly, we. It's, it's, the best, the, the cheapest way to do it is to spend about fourteen grand every other year. Because the mobilization fee for the equipment is high enough. You know, we either spend, you know, around ten thousand bucks every year. Or we spend fourteen thousand every two years. Actually, it's like nine thousand. If we do one year's worth of brush pile. So, that's one where you're right, we could potentially not. We could have potentially taken it out of this year's budget. Um, and put it in the next fiscal year's budget. Because we're not gonna, we're probably not going to grind this spring. We're not going to grind to the next fiscal year. But by then, we will have gone two years and we're going to spend the fourteen grand again. So I've kind of suggested we would be smarter. Doing a, you know, a permanent fund and just fund the damn thing at seven grand a year. So it's consistent from budget to budget. And then, you know, just spend what we have in it. That's, that's been my take on it. The Board of Selectmen did not agree with me though. So.
Okay. So basically, in, in the absence of that, assuming, uh, the future is reflective of the past. And we're going to end up having a swing of fourteen thousand dollars every other year.
Right.
Or literally every year, one year it'll be up, then it'll be down. It'll be up, it'll be down.
Correct.
Alright, understood. Okay, I don't have anything more specific now on these accounts. Anybody else have any specific questions for Eric?
I do have, there are some accounts on this spreadsheet that don't have complete account numbers. So they have little XXXs for the last three numbers. So just, you know, that's just one thing to get cleaned up if those are active accounts.
That's if they pass, I will be assigning account numbers to them.
Okay.
And so if they don't pass, then it's a mute point. I can certainly do that now, but I was want, I wanted to see how far along in the process we get. Whether some of these accounts stay or they go. So, um, I'm willing to do that. If you want me to do that, that's fine.
Mark them on my spreadsheet, of course, but I'm not going to find them. Oh, so, so. I'll just give you an example. It's in the Public Works Department, zero, three, oh, one. And it is the salary temp, public works and salary overtime, public works. They don't have account numbers on there. So, but we had those accounts last year, didn't we? So why wouldn't there be account numbers there? They have numbers in there for last year. For actuals. Yeah, so it's line four thirty-three and four thirty-four on the spreadsheet. Look at the line numbers on the side.
Okay.
Other specific questions for Eric or Sherri? Any.
I think there's a typo. Let me ask this question. Same Public Works. Account number four thirty-five, vehicle maintenance. So it's line four thirty-nine on the spreadsheet. It says department request sixty-two thousand dollars. Is that supposed to be thirty-two thousand? OMG.
No, it's not actually. And I can.
But it says Board of Selectmen approved request thirty-two.
Well, that's because they knocked it down.
Yeah.
They have it down, okay.
They knocked it down.
Okay, so that is correct.
And if you knock it down in your column, that'll be less too. So. That's how it flows.
I didn't think they adjusted any of the department requests. That's why I'm asking. I didn't see them make any adjustments. And I went to virtually all of the meetings.
Can I ask a question? Are we in the wrong, waiting?
We, we can certainly look at that and, and try to get to the bottom of that.
Okay. I know the problem we have this year with vehicle maintenance because of that expense that we had in there. And we're, we have an overage this year, but this is for next year.
Correct. I think, I'm pretty sure the sixty-two thousand covered. Two things that are big ticket items for vehicle maintenance. The first is that the main belt. On the, uh, sweeper needs replacement. Um, and that's around a six thousand dollar item. You know, because if you remember, we, we opted to buy used sweeper instead of paying, you know, so we got.
Out of this fiscal year as part of, we knew that when we bought the sweeper. I thought we were bringing the sweeper in and doing that repair.
We did everything but that. We did do a bunch of repairs. We did not repair the main belt. So that was one. And the second was. You know, there, we still have an issue with the mower head for the sidearm boom flail mower. And Jay wanted to consider, um, the cost, wanted us to consider the cost of replacing. That in this budget. And that was, I think it's about a fifteen thousand dollar mower head.
Not maintenance then, correct?
Well, but you guys have tended to call that maintenance, not capital. I mean, so. I mean, I, I guess technically it could go either.
Because it's a, not a new piece of equipment?
Well, it's.
On it maintenance.
It's just a piece to a mower, essentially.
I get it, yeah.
I can supply you the breakdown for the vehicle maintenance. Because Jay did a good job of putting, you know, all his budgets together. So I can just get you that information about what he had. What he had put down there.
As we go through this budget, there's going to be things that are going to pop up. That we're going to want detail over on the column in the notes section of what's included in that item. Do you know what I means? For reference, because some of these numbers aren't self-explanatory unto themselves. We're going to need some little notes.
Yeah, understood, understood. And I mean, I would suggest that since Public Works is one of the biggest line items in here total. When we go through this, when you want to review that, um, we'll just bring in Jay Tuttle. And Jay Tuttle can be the primary guy that reviews it with you. Because, I mean, he knows it. I mean, I have a fairly good idea of what they're asking for and why, but he can give you the details better than I can. Certainly.
I just have one other quick question. It's just going back to a note I saw on the spreadsheet and it was about. Capital expenses in Public Works. And I think it had to do with the building. And you have a little note over there, based on the list of things that Jay wants to do. And I can't remember where that list is. So when we get to that section, I guess as long as we.
Yeah, and, and I mean, here's another one. I mean, Jay requested it and the board went along with it. But, I mean, part of the reason that I had put in. I had switched from individual capital fund, not capital funds, but capital expenditures. For each individual building to one common building maintenance fund. Was to do a better job of allocating resources. So. We can certainly revisit, you know, how much of this really should remain in there. You know, and have that discussion. Because that's, that's not necessarily a, an area where I agree totally with Jay either. You know?
I mean. Conceptually, having one building maintenance fund that covers all the town buildings. As long as we have itemized postings in there that says for what building it's for, we can always get the detail when we need it.
Yep.
Doesn't have to be within each department, so to speak, if they have a building.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, that building will be a money hog. There's no question, you could spend an enormous amount of money bringing that up completely to a more modern standard, but. You know, there's just only so much money to go around, you know?
Find a grant for that. It's a historical building. It's a hundred years old. We gotta find some money to bring. Back to its glory days.
See, I, I don't think you, I think you want to keep that one kind of on the down low. Because you have a public works department. You know, in salt storage in a floodplain. So, I mean, I think you want to limit the state oversight of that building, frankly.
I have a question. Under advertising, oh, one, two, seven, is that basically just advertising in the, um, River East? Or what else comprises that?
Uh, no, that's majority advertising in River East. We have an enormous number of legal notices that we're obligated to put out every year. Um, and they're not inexpensive. Now, you know, and it's part of it is the, the way we account for things. But remember a lot of that, even though it shows up here as an expense, it's really paid for by other people. And I'll give you an example, like there's a public hearing coming up for a, for the Dollar General, um, that's trying to build in town. They, that has to be noticed twice because there will be a public hearing with that. And then afterward, we're going to have to publish a notice of the commission's decisions. So we're going to end up spending money for three legal notices and we're going to pay for all of them. Except we're not actually paying for them because we're charging the applicant for it. But that shows up in building department fees under revenue. It's not directly correlated to what we pay in advertising. So that's one of the issues that we have is understanding that although some of these things show up as expenses, they're expenses we pass on, you know, in large part to other people. Or entities.
So wouldn't that show as like a, a plus and a minus?
No, we should have, the revenue side should have in the building department fees. And then we have the actual expense. So.
Right.
Nothing wrong with that.
Right. Yep.
So.
That's what we do.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that's fun accounting.
Joy, and you had another question?
Two quick questions. Can, wasn't there a year or maybe last year, the assessor didn't take an increase so that the assistant assessor could get an increase? And I'm just noticing on here that it looks like we're adding something back in. That's, it's small and it can be looked into. Maybe I'm remembering it wrong.
So yes, the assessor for about three years running, actually one whole contract worth gave up his salary increase to, uh, if the town agreed to increase more than the standard, the salary of his assistant. But that did not take place this last, the increases in July, he did get an increase in July. But I think it was his first increase in about four years.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then can you remind me what, what is the cutoff with the hours now? I heard Sheri mention it in one meeting for getting benefits.
Benefits.
Is it 20 hours or 30? What?
So it depends what benefits you're talking about. As of the, the union, the new union agreement will make the cutoff for single person healthcare, 26 hours. You know, for MEIU, that's the only one that's been actively negotiated. So it'll be interesting to see how we do with the other union. Murph by state law cuts in for anybody that's employed more than 20 hours. And we don't have the option to change that.
Right.
And I think I saw somewhere the Murph rate for this coming year.
18%.
18%?
In this budget, it's figured at 18%.
And Sheri?
We also don't have a, a say on that either, unfortunately.
Oh, right. I understand. And so that's 20, anybody 20 hours or above will get the Murph and the retirement plan.
Correct.
Okay. So then, so the benefits you said, those contracts, it's not written out yet. Currently active contracts, but it's not really specified.
So. So right now there's a difference between it currently in both union contracts, it states 20 hours is the kick in for healthcare. The town is, is intending to move to 26 for that cut in. You know, looking forward. You know, because trying to do it retroactively to union employees is probably going to be a non-starter. But that will be the goal is to push that out to 26 per what the Board of Selectmen want to do. So we've got MEIU to agree to that. It remains to be seen whether, you know, we get that through with AFSMI or what we have to give up to do that. But that will be what the town will be attempting to do. And then, you know, kind of do that for, uh, non-union employees. Currently there are no non-union employees in that 20 to 26 hour window. So there's nobody that, that would apply to, um, other than union employees at this point.
And did you say there was a certain amount of hours when sorry, and it's, I'm sorry if I'm a little tired and you just said this. If any kind of like the health insurance, there's no cutoff or you're offered single coverage. And then once you hit 30 hours or something, you can get the family. Did I?
Correct. From 30 and up, you're eligible for a, you know, single or single plus spouse or single plus family. Below 30 hours, um, you know, between currently between 20 and 30 hours, you're eligible for basically employee only. So no spouse, no kids.
Thank you.
Yep. Which brings up the other interesting thing is that, you know, each time you jump, like there's a big cost difference between a 29 hour a week employee and a 30 hour a week employee, a huge cost difference between a 19 hour a week employee and a 20 hour a week employee currently. So, um, you know, but the other thing is, is that.
Especially with Murph too, Eric. If, if everyone gets, and I don't want to say anyone isn't entitled, but if that's a big consideration. Murph, it's almost like 20%.
It is. There's no question.
So when we, you know, gets back to that cost conversation that we have a lot with, you know, and I think you've done a good job or the town as a whole has done a good job about getting some of the salaries where they should be. From what I see posted, but when we always talk about some of the salaries being less, the benefits are very good. You know, some of them. So I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, the, the one real advantage to Murph is that there's so many towns in Connecticut on Murph. And it gives municipal employees the ability to work in multiple jurisdictions. You know, that's so there's some definite advantages from the employee's standpoint. Not so much from the town's standpoint. It's a pretty expensive package from the town's standpoint. You know, but the, the problem is, is that being in Murph and trying to get out of Murph is extremely difficult. You know, it's not a, you know, I've been having conversations with our labor attorney about that. And what would happen if we try? Um, and there's multiple towns attempting to do it right now. And basically Murph and the state has sued all of them. So, you know, his advice is to hold fast the next couple of years. Let's see how all these court cases propagate through and what happens to the towns that are trying to actually get, get out of Murph. And what conditions get applied to them before you even consider it. So that's kind of where we're in a kind of a holding pattern for that.
It's definitely an all or nothing because we've talked about that last year. So I get it. Yeah. Thanks.
Hey, other questions for Eric? Any general discussion? It's a lot to digest here. It's going to be an interesting schedule. I think everyone is aware, or if you're not, you may, uh, man to set around some things. So it looks like we have an opportunity to have, uh, hear from the, uh, RAM superintendent on the ninth. And, uh, the AES superintendent and Board of Education Chair on the 16th. So the next two budget meetings are going to have very specific focuses on the school and the RAM budget. So of course we can continue to talk about the specifics of the town budget as well if we choose. Keep the agenda for those open. Anybody have anything else? Yeah, Eric?
I just wanted to say I did get a note from Val that the budgeted amount that we have in that budget is what passed tonight, um, by the AES board, which I assume Sheri could have told you the same thing.
I was about to tell him that, but.
Sorry, didn't mean to steal.
That's okay. That's, that was where I was coming from, that meeting. But yeah. Yeah. That, that figure in your spreadsheet is definitely correct as of this point.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Diane?
When we get to the revenue tab of the spreadsheet, um, I kind of really want to know where the 2021 fiscal year actual revenue numbers are. Cause there's not a column for it. So I think maybe some of the column headers may not be labeled correctly.
Do we have that data?
Yeah. Cause that, that year has been audited and done and put to bed. Oh, not this year. It's not audited, but we should have unaudited numbers that we can have in there.
And it says right there.
That's, but it says proposed revenue.
Oh, 2020, 2020, 2021. Okay.
Right. 2021. Yes. Not 2021, but 2020, 2020.
Yeah. Okay. And that 2122 with 20 and 21. Okay. So column F.
Yes.
Yeah, it does say proposed. Should that maybe be actual or no? It looks for a ground number. So it's probably not actual.
Right. So we need the actual numbers in here.
I'll add another column. I just followed by the last spreadsheet, uh, last year's spreadsheet. So.
Yeah. Right. I mean, we can do it, but just understand that they're not audited numbers.
Right. That's fine. But.
It's so better than the proposed, the proposed revenue probably doesn't really add any value, but yeah.
One of the things that I'm going to want to dig in on the revenue sheet now is how we come up with these proposed revenue numbers. And having a little bit of more detail around that, I think is important for us to understand how we came to that conclusion. You know, based on our actual collections. You know?
Okay. I mean, which one specifically?
So for example, let, uh, let's look at prior year. I think this is uncollected taxes.
Yeah.
Well, the last revenue report I have shows no year-to-date collections. So I have no idea why even a hundred thousand dollars is a good number. Do you know what I mean? I want to understand the logic behind coming up with that number.
So all three of those were based on taking the last 12 months of data we had and saying, what was actually collected in those 12 months for? Excuse me.
We should have 12 months for 2021. I don't know what we collected for 2021. Fiscal year.
Oh, you'd probably run a rolling 12 month though, wouldn't you, Diane?
Right. I mean.
We have here before $71,000 on here. So what was last year? Then we'd have the two years to look at. You know, so because it's only $71,000, I want to know how do we make that lead to 100?
Where are you seeing 100?
Not audited proposed revenue, a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know.
What row?
Row nine.
Higher year.
Higher year.
Oh, okay.
So we have audit number of $71,000. So that should be a real number. The next year I would assume would be the numbers we're missing, the actuals for year ending 2021. And then going forward, we want, we put 155,000. I don't know how we even got to that number. I want to see how we got to that number. So give me the data.
Well, some of them have to be projections because there's not.
Somebody has to come up with some logical thought process for that number. That's a 55, 55,000 increase.
Well, if you, if you look at what I put in the notes, it's because I took the last 12 months of collection data I had and summed it up from the tax collector's office. So that's saying in a 12 month period, we took in those three values for interest for liens and for prior year taxes.
So Eric, I think what would help, what Diane's looking for is again, she, she would like to see the data. So it's just a data point going forward. If, if in the notes for, for row nine, it said, set the last 12 months collections was 154, 921. Then the rationale would be clear for, you know, where that 155 comes from. Ground number, it doesn't look like an actual value, but I think if you provided it with, what you were basing that on, then I think that would make it clear to her. Does that make sense Diane?
Yeah. If I had the actuals, you know, even though they're unaudited for 2021 fiscal year 20 to dash 21, then it would make more sense to me because I don't have a number to look at. And I don't have a revenue report that the Board of Finance got and it shows any collected. Last revenue report I have is from December. It says zero. So. So just give me a revenue report that shows me what we've collected. I'd be perfectly happy with that. And get some actual numbers in there. So that's all I'm saying is just getting, I think, putting the actuals in for the last fiscal year, even though they're unaudited would clarify a lot of these numbers.
Yes, I agree. I'll put it in. And also get you in a revenue report. I was working on that yesterday.
And I can get you, I, I just have to get into the office to do it. It's in my budget files, all the information from the tax collector for what I based those three line items on.
And we have tracking when we get to building permit revenue, number of permits we issued every year, right? So we have that data.
We do and we don't. We have a period where we don't have very accurate data. We have good data from, we have really good data from the time we started with Permit Link. So in this case, what I did is I took four and a half months of data from Permit Link and just extrapolated it to 12 months for the building department.
Do we have any idea what we did last fiscal year? We have a dollar amount, right? But we don't know how many permits that equates to. I know we raised the fees last year, right?
Well, we raised, we changed the fees a couple of times. You know, because the most, so part of it is that, you know, again, we chose Permit Link because it's cost neutral to the town. The problem with Permit Link is it doesn't have, it's not as tailored necessarily as we would like. And some of the things that we had originally changed our fee schedules to just weren't workable with that system. So you can say that the permit, the fees that we're charging now through Permit Link, that's why I chose to do it that way. Cause I think that represents what's most likely to be next year's. But what I don't know and what's a completely variable number is how much building is actually going to take place next, next year. I mean, that's a total crap shoot. I mean, interest rates go up two or 3% from where they are now. I mean, we could collect a quarter of what we collect.
That's like a tripline on a number of permits would be helpful if we had it year over year, but we don't have it. Right?
Yeah. We, we, we run about 400 permits a year for the building department.
Other questions, suggestions? Other questions, suggestions? One thing I'll just point out, it's again a housekeeping thing, it's minor, but on the revenue tab and sell, uh. G fifty-five and H fifty-five, there's two comments in that, those are comments that I put in the last budget file.
Take these out.
You don't, uh, you don't apply to this budget, so they want to delete those. Other questions or comments?
Where are the fees for the burning permits going?
Uh, I don't know, but you know what, that's such a little amount of money, I wouldn't even bother it personally.
But we show an expense. Right?
Yes, we do.
Wouldn't care if we didn't show an expense. I mean, I know it's not a lot, but. Created a lot of activity in town over that con, over the burning permits.
You say expense, you're talking about the fire marshal or is there a?
We pay an official, a fee for doing the inspections above and beyond there.
I mean, we don't pay them anything, to be honest. All we do is, we basically turn over however much we collect in fees to that person. Um, so if we charge thirty dollars for a burning permit, we give Scott thirty bucks, basically. I mean, I thought it would be easy to just tell him, you know, you work for free, you collect however much money you want from the person. Um, let it not touch the town, so we don't have to account for it, but we can't do that.
That sounds a little bit like extortion.
Yeah, exactly.
What, what could possibly go wrong?
But basically, that's just a complete pass-through to the individual.
Cutting him money, so it's going to show up on the thing with an unbudgeted item, so if we don't budget for what we're going to pay him. It's going to show as a variance all the time.
Hmm, I thought we were budgeting now for.
I don't know, I didn't see it in this budget, so. I could have missed it, there's a lot of roads.
Let me look for burning official, okay. I thought we actually added the burning official to that.
What's the number?
I don't know, I'd have to find it.
Yeah, we'd have to look.
Possible we didn't add it. For some reason, I thought I put them under the fire marshal thing. Um, even though it's not exactly. A fire marshal thing.
Yeah, fire, it says burning official comp. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, well, line item is that?
Line item is, uh, zero, four, zero, five, one fifty. And it says fire burning official comp. Ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, I'm sitting here talking and saying that and it's. I'm muted, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the, uh, the note there says burning official paid per permit used to be part of the road crew forming responsibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we are charging, it does show up in terms, as an expense.
Right.
But you're right, we're not showing it as a revenue.
I'm gay, if everybody wants to burn the town down, you know, we're going to have a lot of revenue off of this.
Other questions? There will be more at some point. So, do you have any general discussion? We have a lot of work to do here, obviously, we have a lot to hear from the schools, um. Talk about their budget. And then we have to get down to the nitty-gritty line by line.
Just going to ask if that was our plan to kind of go section by section. Listen to both school presentations the next coming couple of weeks. And, and then will we break it down, or are we just not even at that point yet that we want to decide those things?
I, I, I mean, I think so, we're going to have the, uh, you know, obviously we'll have the presentation, the RAM is, it's kind of a courtesy thing, right? Um, but, you know, clearly the AES presentation is, is important. Um, you know, and then I, I think. I think it is incumbent upon all of us to look at the. Budget detail fairly closely, we've had a lot of specific questions tonight. Um, it's, it's a little tricky because so many things have moved around, right? Compared to the last budget season, just because of the restructuring of some of their county and et cetera. Um, but a, a lot of the explanation is there, uh, we've talked a lot about other explanations tonight. The question is just, do we have concerns about the level of spending in any one area? And if we do, then we need to have a discussion about those areas and make some decisions. But I, I think that that follows the present, you know, will probably follow the presentations from the school, but it gives us a couple of weeks to digest it. Look through it, you know, we can certainly submit questions to Eric and Sherry in advance of any meeting, so they can be prepared. Know, know what we're going to ask, um, so I, I think that that makes sense. Um, and then we, we follow from there. Does that make sense?
A chart of accounts cross-referencing the ones that got consolidated, is that done yet?
Working on that as well. That was today. As soon as I have that finished, I will email that to the full board.
I just went through here today and I just had a hard time figuring out, without taking out my calculator and adding them all up. Which ones got collapsed into this new number and, and there's no, you know, sometimes there's notes on the side, sometimes there's not. I think it's good if we're showing account numbers that collapse, that we have a reference on there because of the public looks at this spreadsheet, they need to know that too. You know, in the note section. Yeah, these four accounts are now all rolled up into this one account going forward.
Okay, if we have those specific questions, Eric, are you going to say something?
I was going to say, in some cases in the budget in the notes column, I did put specifically in Public Works notes about what rolled up into what. Um, but you're right, it's, we do need that, that crossover that shows exactly what it is. Anybody want to guess for gas and, uh, fuel prices are going at the moment?
I can give you a directional prediction. At least in the short term. I'm not a betting man.
Yeah, so, and if, if any of you have any reviews or comments about the budget book. Um, I realize the thing is long, it's going to take you all a while to go through. Um, but if you have comments or corrections or things that you think we got wrong in there, um, please let me know. Because unfortunately, some of that I wrote long before some of the decisions that were made. And I tried to go back and, and make it current, but there's no question, I, I, I'm sure I missed some things in there, so.
I just want to say, I think you did a good job on that. I mean, I think it's going to be helpful for people that aren't involved in a lot of the meetings. You know, hopefully, if they take the time to read it, it really, it came out good, I mean, I. I hear a lot of the things, but you did a good explanation, so hopefully it'll help the townspeople. Um, yeah, so, nice job on that.
Sure, thank you.
And if you don't have anything more specific, I'm going to propose that we, we, uh, we move on to the next agenda item. Uh, which is correspondence. Don't think we've received any other than the unofficial word of AES budget passing, so we'll, we'll look forward to that. I guess you could say we did receive the budget from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, any other correspondence or anything, um, I think this is a placeholder primarily in case we, we receive. Input from the public about the, uh, budget process or the budget. Okay, it looks like no correspondence, we'll move on to item five, which is public speak, and I don't think we have any. More members of the public present. Okay, item six on the agenda is adjournment, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? Linda, you're muted.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Diane made a motion to adjourn, anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
One of the seconds, any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor of German, say aye. Be opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody, start to.
Thank you, good night.